Hello. Does someone say something I haven't heard a thing yet?
Hello.
I didn't, I didn't recognize you Nathan.
I know, I know, I got a haircut and a shave.
You look good.
Well, thank you.
Hi Bjorn, Jeff Weston here.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
Good to see you. No one knows that you're here except for me now.
That's alright. Alright. Hello everyone, my name is Bjorn Muten, I'm Jeff's neighbor.
Hi Bjorn.
He's here for open, open community comments, I'm not sure, I didn't have a chance to really look at your agenda yet.
Okay.
Or when Bjorn would have a chance to ask a few questions.
Okay. Now, I haven't heard from Steve, well here he is, Steve is just about to come on so. Nice Steve, can you hear us? Stephen, you're muted.
Yes, I can hear you, I couldn't, before I could unmute myself, it was making sure I understood that this meeting was being recorded.
That's good, that's good, okay, I think everyone is here who we expect to be here tonight. I don't know if Keith will be coming, he might I guess, but we'll get started, I'll call this meeting of the Schutzbury Planning Board to order at 7:03, meeting is being recorded. And the first item on our agenda tonight is election of Chair. Now, I will pose the question to the members of the board who are present, is there anyone who would like to volunteer to be Chair for the next year? Is anybody, Michael, I can't, we can't hear you.
He can't hear you.
I guess he's out.
Well, I'll speak for Michael, I see no reason for us to change chairs. You're doing a great job as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I appreciate the vote of confidence.
Fantastic, anyone could do any better. Deacon, this isn't to take away from your being a Chair for many years.
Thank you.
So I guess, Michael, I don't know if you need to drop off and try and get back on, but if you do that, just remember that you started the meeting, so you need to like appoint someone else as host or something. No one else is hearing Michael, right? Okay.
Correct.
Well.
Michael, can you hear us?
I can hear you now, can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, alright, alright, there we go.
I missed the pleasure of nominating Nathan.
No, you didn't, you didn't, yeah, anything, you know, so far there's been a little bit of praise thrown around, but I haven't, nobody's made a motion.
I moved to nominate Nathan Mercy for another wonderful year of chairmanship.
And Deacon seconds, thank you, thank you both. You're very kind.
It's the gift that keeps on giving.
And grateful.
Does anybody want to express any, any discussion doubts or concerns?
I seriously, I think you've done a great job, I really do appreciate it, so. Thank you.
That's my pleasure.
Yeah, you've seamlessly taken the reins from Deacon, from Deacon who led us for such a long time, you've done a great job, Nathan, thank you.
Thank you Jeff. Okay, I will. Election of Chair requires just a simple majority, right? No super majority or anything like that, okay, come on, call the roll. Bressler?
Aye.
Bonner?
Aye.
Weston?
Aye.
And take care.
Aye.
And I will abstain, the motion passes with a clear majority.
So I have one question Nathan, first congratulations and thank you again, since we don't have a note taker, are we just gonna record it and then go back, is that your plan?
Yeah, that's, that's something we should discuss, though it's not, we can discuss it. Next on the agenda is public comment, so we'll, we'll hear from Bjorn, he seems to be here because he wants to address the board, and then we can have a brief discussion on what we're gonna do there. Bjorn, would you like to give public comment or otherwise address the board?
Yeah, I'm just looking for some guidance if you will, I live at forty-five Kettle Hill Road and I am interested in exploring building a garage on my property. And I purchased the property from my mother about nine years ago, and, but it's been in our family since the mid eighties. And I live at the end of the cul-de-sac, Jeff is my neighbor, and I'm interested in exploring a garage. And you know, nine years ago I actually built a in-law apartment for my mother to retire in, detached structure. And I just don't remember all of the setbacks and proper protocol, proper channels for starting a new building project. So that's why I'm here.
Alright, well. Let's see, I'm gonna just bring up. So have you looked at our zoning bylaw recently?
Not recently.
Okay. First and foremost, I would encourage you to do so, as all the information, all the answers to your questions are within that document, well, most of your questions.
Okay.
Okay, so. Garage is an accessory used to residential dwelling, you know. And non-commercial garages shall be considered customary accessory structures to a residential use unless they're designed to accommodate more than five vehicles, in which case a special permit from the zoning board of appeals shall be required for their construction.
I had to, I had to apply for a special permit for my mother's structure because it was a detached structure.
Yeah.
And I remember the setback requirements for that. I am, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So all the setbacks are in there, there's a dimensional table that has minimum lot area and setbacks, and that's for your, you know, your residential use, right, your primary dwelling. So you know, for something like a garage, that would still have to adhere to requirements for setbacks and various limitations, but you know, all that is easily accessible within the bylaw. I'm gonna just try, I mean, basically, with it being a.
Nathan, can I jump in?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, so just looking at the zoning bylaws briefly, I think you're in the key difference between what you did before and now, is that with your mom, it was an accessory use apartment. So that's why it had to be a special permit for a garage. At least from my brief skimming of it, I don't think you need a special permit, you need a building permit. Because no one's living in the garage, if you were to have a garage with, you know, a living unit over it, which you couldn't do because you already have one, an accessory use. So I think it's a matter of really just staying within the dimensions of the lot, you know, so you couldn't get too close to, you know, you couldn't go over the setbacks for your entire parcel. But unlike, and I think I would turn to Steve and Deacon for confirmation of this, but the accessory uses specifics guidelines about how far it can be from the primary house, I don't see anything in there about a garage.
So you know, I found the relevant language, it's, you know, section three point three accessory uses and structures, in addition to the, you know, so three point three dash one. In addition to the principal use permitted in a district, accessory uses and structures which are subordinate and customarily incidental to such permitted uses shall be allowed on the same terms as the principal use, i.e. by right with site plan review, you know, or by special permit. So that's by right to build a garage.
Yep.
You do need a building permit, as Michael said.
Of course.
And when you get a building permit, they're gonna, you know, ask you, you know, you'll have to submit the documentation to that, there'll be plans, and part of their review should be to verify that those plans you have would not violate the zoning bylaw.
Right.
It behooves you to do that same review yourself ahead of going to the building inspector so that you don't, you know, waste your time.
Of course.
Right, so that's, that's basically the long and the short of it, does that sufficiently address your questions?
Yeah, I have one additional question that you may know off the top of your head that may not be as easy to find in the bylaws, and that is so I have, originally it was a double lot. It's listed now as ZW sixty-seven, but my leach field is in that lower lot, it's the only other, it's the only other obstruction in that lower lot. And so in the zoning bylaws, is it clearly stated that an accessory structure like this needs to be a certain setback from the leach field? Obviously, I don't want to put a structure too close to my leach field.
I would say that's a question for the Board of Health.
Okay.
You know, there are. Yeah, I think primarily with the lease field, it's, you know, feet from the well and you know, the well has to be so many feet from the leach field, but you know, I would definitely you know, ask the Board of Health about that, and you know, they may have some other kind of documentation that can help you along the way there.
Okay. But that wouldn't be information that you guys have, or that's readily accessible in the bylaws?
Sometimes our bylaw, you know, will indicate that you know, something must comply with regulations from the Board of Health.
Right.
That's typically what you see, so. Yeah, I mean, I would check with them on that.
Okay, that's good, that's good advice, and is it a similar structure where I would just look up their, their meeting and just jump in?
I mean, you can just, you could also email them.
Okay, yeah, good point.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's always, it's always good to, you might get an answer that way, you know, with us, it depends on the nature of the question, some questions that wouldn't be prudent to really, you know, an email to the planning board goes to all the members as well, right? So it could be open meeting law concerns with some of that discussion, anyway.
Catherine Hilton would be very prompt in answering your question, she's really quite good.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what is her name?
Catherine Hilton. She, she does the work for the Board of Health.
Excellent, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
We vote to allow her to do that town meeting.
Every year.
Excellent, well, thanks guys, I felt like it was appropriate to go through the proper channels and start with you, and I'll put my plans together and talk to the building inspector and Board of Health and go from there.
Best of luck with your new garage, Bjorn.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Nice to meet you, have a wonderful evening.
Likewise, take care.
No, no, always good to see you, take care.
You as well, Jeff.
Okay. Would anyone like to volunteer to take minutes tonight? Should be a pretty easy meeting.
I can, I can do it after the fact if need be, if no one else wants to jump in.
Yeah, if. Yeah, that sounds good Michael, maybe we can connect on it too.
Okay.
So Friday was Carrie's last day, our land use clerk is gone. I was expecting that I would be asking us to start compiling minutes that need to be done that haven't been done yet. However, Carrie informed me that she doesn't tend to do the minutes, and that she's going to continue to work on a more or less part-time basis. Even though she is starting a new job. So I told her, you know, that obviously at some point, you know, when you make a transition, sometimes you need to kind of you know, make a clean break, but she seemed happy to kind of continue with some of that, some of that work, you know, some hours. So that's good news for us. Now, I did not get around to touching base with town hall, but what I'll say is that and we are trying to figure out the question of who will be you know, the next land use clerk, you know, Becky is working on that, or town administrator, and hopefully, that will we'll soon have somebody in that role that can assist us as well as the Conservation Commission and the zoning board of appeals.
I will say having a online recording is a real benefit.
It is, it is. The issue with online recordings is it, I think it drives a tendency towards transcript over concise summary.
Not if I do it.
Great, you know. That's, that's my experience with it.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the point, I think it's, it's pretty correct. But I wouldn't have volunteered for that, so it should be, it'll be, I think the, actually the hard part about not having a land use clerk is filing stuff. You know, like that's really the important thing, because there's all these deadlines and procedures and forms have to get filled out, so fortunately we're in a lull, which is great, but you can never anticipate that ending.
Yeah, right, right. So that's, I think that's about it on that for now, we'll I'll help Michael with the minutes if he needs it, unless someone else just all of a sudden kissing, hurts to say, I want to do some minutes. So. Michael, would you like to share your screen?
Yes, and so there's two things I could share for this A and R, let's see, where is my share screen thing? So this is the house we're looking at, South World, thirty-six South World Drive, just, I couldn't find another picture of it. So this is the lake over here, this is South World Drive, and this is the house, and that's the picture of it. And then let's see if I can scooch over to, that's not what I wanted. Here's the, can you guys see the form?
Yes.
Okay, so. You know, the you know, at some point we should discuss this, I don't know Deacon, if you have insight into this, but we don't get a written explanation of what they really want to do. Like this is the only thing that we have, is this little form here, it says who they are and where they live, which is in Pelham, and their contact information, but it doesn't, do you know what they're trying to do? Nathan? And it might have just been an oversight with Carrie, sometimes she submits, there's a plan or something, but there wasn't one in this one.
Oh, there wasn't a digital copy of the plan?
No, it's just this application as far as I could tell.
Oh no.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, no, you know, I thought that I thought she had said there was a a digital copy. So that's.
I'll stop sharing so I can look, I'll look on my computer again, but she would have sent it to everyone.
Do you guys see this?
We see that it's a big piece of paper.
No, I know, I don't know, I'm thinking about. Yeah, I guess I can just try and take a decent photograph of this and, and send it to, to you real quick, if that's gonna, we'll see.
Nathan, you're emailing it to us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see if that goes through. It might take a minute. So we could just. Yeah, no, I my apologies, I was under the impression that we had a digital version of it.
Yeah, I'll share it in a sec.
Did it come through for anyone?
Yeah, I got it.
They do, okay.
Yeah. So is it, this one, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
So it's this, right? Dwelling number thirty-six?
Yeah. But is is dwelling number thirty-five involved? Because it seems to incorporate that as well.
From the form?
Well, it's it's all Michael, Michael and Linda Grabco.
Yeah.
Gripco.
Gripco, thank you.
So is what they're doing eliminating the line between the two parcels?
I see Tom has his hand up, so I'm guessing that he's gonna shed some light on this for us.
Yeah, you might notice that with my husband Frank, the owner of the small lot, that's got the little split the line on it there, do you see that?
Oh, there, look at you guys.
Yeah, so and we're also the neighbor on the other side of thirty-five there on the top left of the screen. So I do know, but I don't want to speak for anyone, but I could add what I, what I do know, if that would be helpful.
Yeah.
So as far as I understand the intentions, because they were also in front of the Board of Health and in front of the Conservation Commission, where they shared a lot of their plans and what they're doing. Before I forget, so as of now, all of the properties that say Gripco or Last Star Camp, which you see on dwelling thirty-six, now are all owned officially by Last Star Camp LLC, whose only operators are Michael and Linda Gripco. Beef, they bought number thirty-six, which is the dwelling that goes to the dotted lines about a month ago in May, maybe two months ago. But it did not include, they already owned the parcel that they're connecting it to now. And that parcel is number A or A forty-one, I think dwelling number thirty-six is A forty-one, but they're combining the two parcels, they already owned the smaller parcel for many years now.
The one behind you guys.
Yeah, the one all the way on the right of the screen.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
It's just a small rectangle, and that one they've owned concurrently, but as a separate, like, you know, assessed tax document and everything from the property across the street. Which is number thirty-five. So what they appear to be asking for now is now that they own number thirty-six, they would like to increase the whole size of that property by adding a parcel they already own to it. And essentially, it will probably become one of those, the parcels for the taxes. And essentially, it will probably become one of those the parcels for the Tax Assistant. Where it's a combined. Property of more than one parcel. And. I assume that gives them advantage for. Whatever development they might have to do. To uh. Make number thirty six habitable in terms of septic and well and those sorts of. Or just add more space.
So. They're asking us to approve the elimination of the line between the two parcels.
Yeah, this was very. Uh, recently, the planning board did a similar thing for a property across the lake for. Um, on Lake Drive, I think it was. It was all in the waterfront. There were like three parcels and one was added to it. But this is the same sort of thing, the way I look at it or understand.
You know, the only thing I wonder about now is uh. If, you know, these plans are now out of data, if you say the uh. The properties have already changed hands. From uh, Michael and Linda to Last Star Camp?
Well, Michael and Linda um. Formed an LLC. And that LLC Last Star Camp now owns, if you look at the Vision Property Cards. Oh, Last Star Camp is now the owner of Thirty Five South Laurel. It's also the owner of the parcel on the top right of the screen. And separately, it's also the owner of dwelling number thirty six. If so, it's kind of it owns three properties and it's asking, I think, here to turn two of those properties into one property. Which would be thirty six.
No, understood, but. You know, the issue is that the, you know, these. This plan doesn't show them as the current owner. It shows. You know, the. Michelle and Linda.
Which I don't know if that's. Critical or not, because they are the principal operators of the LLC, so they are effectively the people who own it, not the company who owns it.
Understood.
I don't know if that's I don't know what that implies or what that entails. But yeah, that's the way I read the Vision Property Cards is. Um, in twenty twenty three, everything was. Uh, you know, title transferred to Last Star Camp.
Is that? Do you? I don't. I don't know this. Do we have a timeframe that we have to approve A and Rs?
Yeah. Probably a. Twenty one day clock starting today. Possibly, we could push it. Not sure when uh. This was received.
My first.
How did they go? How did they sign the Form A?
It's uh, here. Can you guys not see it? I'll stop sharing and reshare. Can you see that now?
Okay.
So the date was July first, which is last Monday. And they're the applicants as human beings, not as the company. Um, and these, I think these are the two accurate deed book numbers. So those are the two parcels.
You keep that up for one second there.
Yeah.
He's one thirty eight. If anyone else has the ability to bring up that form on their computer and try and. Find these properties. Let's try and do that real quick.
Wouldn't you mean? Wouldn't they just be they're referenced on the map?
Yeah, yeah, they're the same properties. Right.
I think the only issue is just that who owns them, but by reference to the, you know, they're accurate between the form and the map.
Yeah. I will say, I I know for a fact, these people are entirely on the up and up. I don't doubt that. I mean, I I wouldn't. I'm not suspecting foul play or anything like that. I'm just wondering if it's a. More or less, you know, a paperwork error that could result in some sort of uh. You know, issue if, uh, you know, there was a. A plan endorsed by the the board that then unless the correct uh. You know, the the holders of the deed. I see, you know, it's uh. It's Last Star Camp um on on one from uh. Hogan Edmund T Junior.
It.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if Deacon knows this. From past experience, I mean. In A and R, it means that, you know, that we they don't need our approval, but. I wonder if we can. Um, reject it for inconsistency and then ask them to just redo it with the right. Title. You know, because we're not we're not disapproving it, but we can't approve it as is, which is different.
I mean, I.
Deacon, do you get the sense that it's not an issue?
I. No, I'm not. I'm not saying that. I'm I'm just saying that um. This is uh. This is something we. We want to figure out how to how to approve this. You know. Expeditiously. I mean.
I I agree.
Because it's, you know, and I'm not sure. I mean. I mean, I would wonder about some sort of solution where. Where you got in touch with with them. And and just work this work this through. And. And maybe they can. Maybe they can change the paperwork a little bit. And we can authorize you to approve it once. Once the paper is settled in a way that we're we're clear on who owns it.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's certainly a very reasonable approach, I think. Um, right now, I I I'm looking up this uh. The A and R handbook. It's a uh. It's like the Commonwealth Department of Housing. So I'm going to take a quick peek at this.
I'm thinking to reject it and ask them to come back and explain it. You know, that's um. It seems reasonable to me.
Well, I. I think it's real clear. I mean, I think it's clear enough what what's happened. I mean, is that.
Yeah.
The, you know, they're just two different names going on and. We should try to. We should try to settle this without making making them go through another meeting.
I'm struggling to find the deed references for the one.
Yeah.
I find the deed reference for the other. I can find Last Star Camp references in the deed registry. They might have submitted the wrong number on the. Of the book and page.
Yeah, well, there's the one from the former has the um. Has a letter in the page number.
You know.
Right.
Although I get Deacon's point about not. Making it too bureaucratic. It's seen. My hunch is that it's a timing thing like. You know, my if it left to me, I would want to do everything and move it quickly and just sort of like check everything off, but. It might be that you can't apply for the AR until the name change and ownership is actually recorded in some document. You know, so if they weren't able to deliver the document. Then we could approve it because it would be the same owner on paper. Um, it might just be a timing thing where even if they went to the um. The, you know, Franklin County. For a deed change, it might, you know, processing time, it might take a few weeks to get an actual document that shows that. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think that the deeds are recorded. It's just that the. You know, the the issue I see is that. The land shown on the plan does not reflect the current owner as recorded in the registry.
Right. Yeah, that's what I was. That's what I was trying to get to. Yeah.
So it's not. It's not. It's not a processing issue with the registry of these. It's going back to the surveyor and having them.
Or 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 the map is or the map was the map was produced. Earlier than.
Yeah.
Then the then the parcels were registered.
Right, right. I mean, I'm sure that's a. You know, what happened and it was a. Yeah, timing issue, right?
Yeah, but but I don't think that's inconsistent with the suggestion I made. Which is that is that we we authorize you to talk to them. You know, get the. Get it clear on a piece of paper that that the what the ownership is. And authorize you to sign it once that had been done.
Would that be requiring a new set of plans with the correct ownership on them?
I I wouldn't think so. That would that a new set of plans for them would be. Would be would be actual money. I mean, I.
Yeah.
But.
You know, I mean, I I'm not. Like overly concerned about it. I I, you know, I'm just, I don't fully understand what kind of. Consequences could uh. Could happen, but I, you know, when there's you're doing A and R and uh. It's. You know, the ownership can change, right? You you do an A and R and you sell one of the lots and, you know, now the lot, the the plan, you know, it's not like the plan is updated every time the ownership changes anyway.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, yeah, I don't. I don't even know that it's an issue. I is I'm just kind of. Trying to figure it out. I wonder if you're if we're, excuse me, if we're concerned about setting precedent. That you can add a note to the A and R. Something to the effect, and don't take these words as the words, but something to the effect of. That their LLC. Is equals their their name. In other words, the two are in fact the same. So that in the future, if somebody else comes along and tries the same thing. But they don't really own the LLC. They can't do it. You guys understand what I just said? More or less.
It's interesting what Deacon said.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I so here's my question. Like. We're 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 assuming. That there's an urgency to this. We have no idea if there is or not. It seems like. Asking Nathan to get back in touch with them and. Letting them know that they need to come to the next meeting with corrected documents or just send them forward. Because it's only a month, you know, and that's it's pretty straightforward. You know, my other sort of tangential question is, I was just looking at our A and R regulations. I feel like we should ask people to come before us and present. Although, I mean, we're spending twenty minutes or so guessing about something. It's like, if you want to do this thing.
Yeah.
You know, like, we need to hear it from you and understand it as opposed to sort of filling in the blanks. That's not our job.
Yeah.
Michael, I completely agree, and this is a volunteer position, the planning board. They should come completely prepared and show up. It's not our responsibility to figure this out. I mean, that's my. Uh, initial feeling about it.
I would say it is our responsibility to figure it out.
Without any information, though, we don't like, I mean, we don't know the timeframe.
You you submit a form and the plans to the board and, I mean, that's a. Yeah, I don't think I don't know if it says anything in the regulations about attending a meeting over it.
No, that's what I'm suggesting that we might want to discuss in the future, changing the regulations. Because. You know, if they said, oh, no big deal. We just wanted to do this, but we're not going to do anything for six months. We don't have to jump through hoops to figure out, you know, but if there was an urgency, we could take Deacon's suggestion. You know, and so we're we're just. Either way, we go, we're guessing, is what I'm saying. We could do what Deacon said.
It's a, I mean, you know, here at this point, yeah, we're we're, you know, typically, these are more or less straightforward, and here we have a little bit of a, you know, potential paperwork here, and we're we're a little bit tripped up. It's all right. You know, these things happen, you know, worst case scenario is a. I suppose. I suppose we would have to take action and and. And decline to endorse it. Otherwise, within twenty one days, the uh. The town clerk would be compelled to endorse it with the absence of planning board action. Right, so um. You know, if we're not comfortable endorsing this as is, then I I think we do want to uh. I mean, you know, we could decide to take no action and say, you know, we were not endorsing it, but we'll let it be constructively approved, which would be a a strange move to do. I mean, I do think, you know, we could uh.
Here's the question, though, Nathan, because you raised this earlier in terms of when you first said, I'm not sure if this is creating a future problem. I mean, we could. Decide. That conditional upon you getting. Well, we could endorse it right now, right? Because the numbers match for the plot. Um, someone down the road could say your A and R was endorsed with two different owners. And that that'll be problematic. So in some regards, it's protecting them to say what we need is the same ownership on the lots. And then we're, you know, we're happy to endorse. There's no reason not to.
Yeah, I mean, that that's what they want. It's just the same ownership on the lots.
Yeah, I mean, or we could do what Deacon said, which is just sort of conditionally leave it, you know, we can endorse. Conditionally. I'm not sure how. I mean, we can make a motion to that effect, but documentation wise.
You cannot impose a condition on endorsing an A and R. We either have to endorse it or not. Um, I I I would imagine that's. It it doesn't have to be a condition. It can be based on the understanding. In other words. This is an A and R based on the understanding that. That their name equals the LLC. We approve it. And that's just a protection for future. Uh, you know, issues if somebody, you know, tries to pull something over.
My feeling is I I would reject it, and Nathan, if you would reach out to them. And gather some more information regarding that, then we could approve it the next meeting. That's my feeling. It's hard to approve it if they have different names, even if they're the same, but we don't know that.
Yeah. But I thought I thought, Tom, you said they are the same.
Well, we do know that from Tom, but.
Uh, right, I I'm not your. I'm not a valid source of information on that, and. One side of me does wonder whether. It's different, actually, because. When that catastrophe happens and before things are settled. A person dies or something, what are the consequences of whether their assets are in an LLC or in their private ownership? It might not be apples and apples.
Well, for them to fix this, then they would have to. Get a get a new um. Map, basically. That's what we're saying. Because there's no, I mean, there. There's no additional information we need. We can reject it based on the fact that. It's not the same owner. There's no additional information we need. We can reject it based on the fact that it's not the same owner.
Right.
Certain, we're not certain it's the same owner.
Well, on the face of it, it is. Each, each parcel has a different owner stated on the map.
Is a different owner stated on the map than is recorded in the registry of deeds? I don't even think, you know, with the paperwork, it, it's, I mean, you know, I would say ideally you'd say, okay, you know, uh, the Javco is on behalf of, uh, you know, the, uh, Lone Star Camp or whatever it's called, uh. Last Star Camp. So then they, we, we don't need additional information from them. We need to just tell them they need to make the deed consistent uh, with their name. For both properties.
Uh, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the absence of a compelling reason, that seems like the most straightforward, um, approach. You know, it's sort of, it's, it's risk free because we're just looking to align things.
Well. I'm almost leaning to, to just approving it because it's, uh. Yeah, I don't like it, um. But I, I'm, you know, looking at this document and, and, you know, everything it says in here is, uh, you know, there's a lot of questions about zoning bylaws and uh, most of which I think is, is kind of like, you know, you, you have to endorse it anyway. If it, if it doesn't show a subdivision, the, the, the big thing is, uh, whether or not there's access on a, uh, on a road that meets the, the standards, right? And we've been through that before. But I, you know, I think, uh. And the other thing we can do is we can, um, we can have a quick meeting in, in two weeks' time. Uh, to give, so, you know, we can take a look at the issue a little bit more closely. You know, just get at least four of us to hop on a quick call and do what needs to be done. Which, which I would.
I wonder if it is, if it isn't just as, if it isn't a question of, of getting the Form A signed by them in a way that establishes that, that they, they own Lone Star Camp. I'm not sure what that would involve. I mean, because I, I think you don't, you want to avoid making them, making them get a new map. That's hundreds of dollars.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and it. It doesn't, right, it doesn't matter. It's, uh, if. You know, if you get a new map, it says, uh, Last Star Camp on all the lots, and you know, that's fine and dandy. If they had done this, uh, before the transfer took place and then did the transfer, it, it wouldn't really have any impact on anything, right? It wouldn't be any different. You know, it's just in this scenario where it's, uh, shows Last Star or shows, you know, Javco, but it's already been transferred to Last Star.
I don't know though.
I don't, I don't think it's an issue.
I, I, I sort of think it might be. I mean, you would want to have a map in town that's accurate, accurate of ownership.
No, no, if you look at any plan, uh, in the entire registry of deeds, like, you know, ninety percent of them are not accurate as to ownership because they were done and then transfers were done and they don't, uh, make a new plan when you do a, a transfer of one of the lots. Okay, here's a question. What if LLC has, is a different legal, legal entity with different legal responsibilities than just the owners? Well, it's not, it, it, that, that doesn't really have any bearing on, you know, the provisions of the subdivision control that, uh. They provide for, uh, these plans to be recorded. You can cause to be recorded a, uh. All right, section eighty-one P provides that an A and R endorsement shall not be withheld unless such plan shows a subdivision. I mean, that's a.
So here's the question. I'm looking at the town of Shutsbury Assessor's card for the property. And it says that thirty-six South World Drive, the owner is Edmund T Hodgen. H O D G E N. That's none of the players we've been discussing.
That's the assessors now?
This is the assessor, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they bought it like May first. That just hasn't been updated. He's the previous owner.
Okay.
The, the registry of deeds has their new deed.
Okay.
I, I don't know why this is, um, maybe ignorant about this, why this is a pressing issue. It just, it's a transfer of a clarif- clarification of land ownership. I'm not sure why it can't just be pushed ahead a month for some clarification. I don't see, there's nothing happening. It's just a transfer of land. That's my feeling about it. And I think it's important to establish ownership, um, uh, a hundred percent that we're clear about the ownership before we do this. Um, they're not planning on doing anything. It's just a transfer of land or a combination of land. Anyway, that's my feeling about it.
Yeah, you know what, um? I don't think, uh. Would anybody be amenable to having a quick meeting, uh, later this month to, to deal with this?
I, I could probably be there.
Okay.
No, I, I certainly would. And I, and I think, I think you should have that in your pocket when you, when you call.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, I mean, this is, I, I, I think maybe the thing to do is, is like you say, yeah, on the paperwork, on the Form A. Uh, just indicate the, uh, Last Star. Company or, or whatever needs to be on there to, so that it's, uh. So that it can be, you know, tied to the, uh, owners. Yeah, I, you know, I, I apologize, uh, because I, I, I like to try and, uh, get ahead of this a little bit and it's been a little bit of a faux pas on this. So my, my sincere apologies. We'll wrap it up. We'll, uh, I'll, uh, I'll touch base with them and we'll get something on the books to just deal with this real quick and, uh, and we'll go, we'll go that route. Um, so. And I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
Great.
No, no, a full, a full power on your. Hard. I mean, I, you're doing great. I mean, I think it's, uh, actually, it was, uh. They should have put more effort into making sure that it was clear. So it's not your, it's not your issue, Nathan. I appreciate all the work that you do.
I, I don't know, Jeff. I mean, Nathan, we just reelected him and yet he made a major faux pas. Now, I, I'm not sure. I tried, I tried to, I tried to offer it up, you know? Okay, um. So, uh, the next, the next thing I want to talk about is a, uh, you know, communication. And, uh, in typical fashion, I didn't get anything out ahead of time. Uh, I do have a little bit of a draft going. So I'm gonna just share it.
Do you need permission or you can do it?
I can do it. I, uh. Yeah, I do. I need to, I desperately need a new computer. No, I can't, I can't even resize it. Well, I, I can't even work with, uh, I can barely work with Microsoft Word.
Now that you reelected chair, you can celebrate and get a new one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I gotta, uh, I gotta do it. All right. So, uh, dear citizens of Shutsbury, the planning board has set a goal to increase its, uh, and by the way, this will be just, you know, going out via town announce. The planning board has set a goal to increase its engagement with the community. While none of us have any illusions about the time people are willing or able to spend following the business of the planning board. We do believe that an increase in outreach from our end would have merit. As such, we are making an effort to communicate broadly with the inhabitants of Shutsbury on a quarterly basis. By combination of the town amount, of the town announced email list and entries in our town newsletter. Additionally, we will utilize the town announced email list to communicate the details for public hearings. The planning board is a public body with seven elected members and two associate members who are appointed in joint session of the planning board and the select board. As we enter a fiscal year, please congratulate our members Nathan Murphy and Jeff Weston, who are reelected to three-year terms. Ashley Pycroft, who was elected to a one-year term, and Keith Hasty and Tom Seifert, who were both reappointed as associate members, hopefully tomorrow, right? Lastly, as is tradition at the first meeting of the fiscal year, the board elects a chair. Nathan Murphy has been elected to serve for a second year. Looking forward to the coming year, we don't know what will happen with regard to the ongoing legal proceedings over our solar bylaw or whether we will receive any special permit applications for large projects. We expect the unexpected. Aside from what we don't know, the members of the board hope to continue discussion about tiny houses and affordable housing in Shutsbury, which started sporadically sometime last year. And will be an ongoing, open-ended conversation at this time. And, and at this time is an ongoing, open-ended conversation. And that's, that's, uh, that's basically it, um.
Could I make a, a small suggestion?
You can make a, a huge suggestion.
One is a tiny one, um, it's a sort of a, what will happen with regards? I think there's an S there.
Okay.
Oh, no?
No, 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 I, I was gonna comment, but go ahead.
Uh, yeah, and, and the second one is, I, I, I think you should put in and say, it's a volunteer public body. You know, um, so people don't, people don't think that we're. I, I, I think the Tom response, or at least my response, um, if I wasn't on the planning board, was, would be to more greatly appreciate the planning board, knowing it's a volunteer position. And, um, I think, um, it would possibly change the way that people interact with us too. Um, knowing that we're, uh, volunteer public servants rather than paid. So I, I think it should be included, um, for that reason.
Okay. I have one quick question. Excuse me. Did you write this before we reelected you?
No, he edited during the meeting.
Is Eric, are you just giving him an out, Michael? I, I, I didn't dare send it out to you like that before the meeting.
He had high hopes.
I guess, I guess you were pressured, huh? You know, I, I, I just, I, 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 I just had a feeling that no one else was going to be interested in it. And, uh, I just wanted to just have one last edit, you know? Yeah, I'm just yanking. I'm just trying to save time where I can, but you know, that's, uh, it's a fair point, uh, Steve. Oh, Tom, you're still, okay.
So I have, I have a sort of a higher level non wordsmithing comment. Um, so in the first paragraph, the fact that we said we're gonna, um, communicate public hearings via town announce. I, I don't know if you checked with Becky, but you know, just like all email listservs, people are really concerned about getting, you know, too much traction on it. Like, you know, and I'm sure we all groan when Becky sends out something about snow or flooding and we get it on our phone and our email and our text and you're like enough already and then you get the update. So I think this is, is fine to do because it's sort of a one-off. But I, before promising that we'll communicate public hearings via town announce, I would just check with, you know, Becky to make sure that in terms of expectations, um. Because I think, you know, there's lots of other hearings and if people, if every committee did it and we started precedent, we'd inundate people. Um, and I think people would maybe not pay attention to town announce in the same way. So, you know, and technically speaking, if it's a public hearing, if it's a special permit or butter, you know, they'll get it. If it's just a, you know, a policy public hearing, then it would make sense to send out a, a town announce. So I think it's sort of figuring out how we communicate using this as a a delivery device without doing it too frequently.
I, I.
That makes sense.
What about if we just cut that last par, that last sentence off the first paragraph? I mean. I, um. The intention, so what I'm getting from this is the intention here is we will, we are going to make a better effort, an effort to communicate better the business of the planning board. We don't have to get as nuts and, you know, nuts and bolts as that last sentence gets.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, because I think if we, if we just commit to using all the tools that the town has for communicating. You know, because, you know, the town, the our town is quarterly for that purpose. Everyone gets to write whatever they want to write every quarter to update. And that's got pretty good readership.
Maybe I should take out on a quarterly basis as well. Yeah, I think that's fair, fair enough. I think, I think the intent is clear in that first paragraph without those thoughts. All right, all right. Wait, and one other just really small tweak. Sporadically, I don't think you need that word. It, it sounds like. You know, you're, uh, that's, that's true. I, I was, uh. It, it may be true. I'm not saying it's not true, Nathan. No, 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 it's, uh, the, that's, that's good, um. That started, uh, in the last year.
I love the phrase, we expect the unexpected.
Good. And, you know, truth be told, I, I did write this right before the meeting. So it's not, it's not very refined or anything. So, uh, you know, I appreciate. Um, and, and you know, I, I, if we do a motion on this, then I would, uh, I would include, uh, you know, sending it, uh, straight to Tom for one last.
I got one little substantive thing, which I always want to do. Instead of saying citizens, it shoots very residents, it shoots very, because everyone's a citizen.
Oh, good. Yeah, that's good.
I'll give you two tiny things right now, if you want, just a good amount of.
Yeah.
Ashley's name is L E I G H, Ashley Pycroft.
Oh, wow.
And, um, right after that, in the next line, one-year term, probably put a hyphen or. I think it's a hyphen. It's a three-year.
Okay. Is this dash here? Sometimes I write with like that style. I don't know if it's grammatically correct.
It's migraine.
Does, does one say with regard or with regards? I'm not sure.
Hey.
I think, no, uh, maybe it's either.
I think with regard can be fine. Uh, word doesn't like it, so I'll say. Regarding ongoing legal proceedings. For large projects, right? Uh, within the last year. An open-ended conversation. We will sweep you. Posting.
Do you, Nathan, I know we talked about this briefly, like one or two meetings prior where Keith had raised and I supported the idea of maybe doing uh, climate-related addition to the master plan. I don't think we have to give everybody our agenda, but I don't know if you intentionally left it out or not.
Yeah, you know, I didn't intentionally leave it out, um.
We don't have to put it in either. I just wanted to ask, you know.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, um. Yeah, no, I mean, that's um. Uh, yeah, you know, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll put it in, um.
Nice.
Yeah, I mean, so I could just kind of leave it at that, um.
Have you sent out town announces before?
No.
Yeah, contact Yale. There's a. It's, I always get confused when I send it out. They. They say we should do it, but there's a way that you're supposed to do it.
Yeah. Um. Should I just say sincerely Shutsberry Planning Board or Nathan Murphy on behalf of the Shutsberry Planning Board? Does anyone have any? I don't care. I honestly don't care. Um.
You should claim your title.
I think it sounds nice coming from Nathan. On behalf, because just my.
Yeah.
Two cents.
Should I do a Nate, like, oh, I'm on my own this, or put a new liner? It's good?
Yeah, it's fine.
I appreciate the uh. Feedback, was it this as a?
Yeah, you don't want, Nathan, you don't want to say that you're chairman of the planning board? Did you say that?
Yeah, I was saying you could put a comma, Nathan Murphy. Comma chair on behalf of the. Shutsberry Planning Board.
Yeah, and I think it should be sincerely. The recently unanimously. Nathan Murphy as chair.
Although, though, though more recently regretfully.
It just kind of rolls off your tongue, you know?
We, we, yeah, I should just make a ridiculously long sign-off on this thing, right? Uh, you know, uh. Just kind of. Do, 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 do we need to put chair? I feel like that really, Nathan Murphy on behalf of the Shutsberry Planning Board is kind of. I, I mean, I don't know, it's a.
You're just a regular guy. Right?
I mean, it, Nathan, if you really wanted to keep it simple, Nathan Murphy, Chair of the Planning Board. They go. I mean, that's it.
Right.
Or Chair, you know, Planning Board Chair. It, it, because it, it's kind of implied that you're speaking on behalf of the rest of us.
Uh huh.
I mean, that's my feeling at least, I, I. And I always like things shorter anyway, so.
You like that, yeah.
Looks good.
I say, paint it.
What's that?
They say, print it. I mean, go with it.
Okay. Um. Yeah, it doesn't like making an effort, but I could just say, you know what? Ignore once. Okay, yeah, no, that's great. Okay, so uh. Do we? Need a vote on that? Or is it just that we uh kind of tacit approval or? What do we want?
Go for it.
I'll make a motion that we accept this and vote on it.
Okay, yeah, um. So, uh, Steve has moved to, to accept this and vote on it, um. Or, you know, he's.
That's a motion.
Yeah.
I, I second.
Okay, um, discussion. Okay, I'll call the roll. Uh, Bressler.
Hi.
Weston.
Hi.
Takeara.
Hi.
And uh, I'm an I. Thank you, I appreciate it. You know, this is a. It's my pet project. I, I sometimes ask why I do this to myself, but I, I do. I don't know. Hoping for the best on us. Um. And I think that's, that's about it for our agenda tonight. Um.
Except for executive session.
I, yeah, that's a. For, for, for me.
Yes.
Um. Yeah, so that, that, yeah, that's it. Next is uh. We're gonna go into executive session. Uh, it's a uh. You know, Michael is uh. Going to run that, so I'll uh, I'll hand it to you, Michael. Um. And I'll just say, uh, good night to everyone. Thank you and uh. I look forward to another year serving as uh. As your fearless leader, right?
Great. Well, that, that's an honor for us, and you'll get back with us in terms of um, setting up a time if you want another time in two weeks.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will. Uh, I'll, I'll see if I can. Send an email out to them now or uh. Or I'll see what information's on their form. And uh, get with them, so. Uh. By the time we get back, it'll be uh. Hopefully, easy, easy peasy. So. Alright. Uh, thank you everyone.
Yeah, Nathan. So I'm realizing, I'm realizing we should probably. Just vote to include Tom since we did it last time, but I think we probably should do it every time. Um, so, or just, does anyone have an objection to including Tom in executive session?
No, and yeah, you know, I, I actually didn't even think of it at the beginning of the meeting to just include Tom as a member for the meeting, so I apologize for that, Tom. I just uh.
Well, I'll be, yeah.
You know, I mean, uh. Yeah, just, he, he's an associate member and we have free reign, so you can. Put him in, uh, Michael.
Yeah. I just wanted to.
Unilaterally, you can just do it.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Because you're, you're gonna be acting as chair for the executive session, so it's, it's.
That's true.
You're gonna shut the recording down, Michael?
I am, as soon as I finish this, so Tom, you're in.
You have to do a motion first, right? And I'm gonna leave now, so.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
And Nathan. So. Yeah, so I will, I'll cut off the recording as soon as I do this, so. Uh. We're gonna, next session is regarding to executive session for reason number three. Discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the government's litigating position. Litigation specific to the complaint received from Coles. And then Pure Sky regarding the Shutsberry Solar Bylaw not to return an open session. So we can do a roll call, um, so. Um. Oh. You know, that should have been a motion, so I'm gonna move, I'm gonna say that was a motion. Anyone want to second that motion?
Second.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Okay, so now we'll call in, so Jeff.
Hi.
Ethan.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay, so let me turn off. Recording. Uh. Uh. Recording. Stop recording, okay.